So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December meeting of the North Miami Planning Commission. Today is December the 2nd. Or, actually, it's not Thursday, as the note says, it is Tuesday, December 2nd. This time, let's call the meeting to order. The meeting is now called to order. Madam Secretary, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Okay, Chairman Ernst.
Present.
Vice Chair McDermade. Commissioner Ich. Commissioner Ich. Commissioner Seifried.
Here.
Commissioner Pierre. Commissioner Bob is absent. And Commissioner Besen. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's all stand, please, and pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you very much. Staff, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, we do not, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Love, and welcome once again.
Thank you, sir.
Approval of the minutes for September 18th, our special planning commission meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McDermade, seconded by Mr. Seifried. Do we have any continued public hearings at all?
No, sir.
Very good. So, the first public hearing we have tonight is for PC 17-114.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Under Communications.
Yes.
We just wanted to remind you of your meetings, but you had also asked for the Public Works Director
Yes.
to come and speak with you all. I'm not sure, I can't tell if he's in the audience or not.
Yes, he is. He's walking up to the podium.
I see.
Okay.
I apologize, sir. Good evening. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Public Works, Karen Phillo, Public Works, thanks, Debbie. My presentation is very, I don't have a presentation, just a quick update.
Sure.
So, what we're currently waiting on for the bridge is we're waiting on concurrence from FDOT. Once we receive that, which should be any day now, our anticipated complete start of construction is the first quarter of next year of 2026, and completion is the second quarter of 2027. So, that's where we are with the pedestrian bridge.
What was the delay?
Delay, really, what happened is this project had been bid, I think, three times. So, initially, when we got a first bid, I think it was, we had gotten one bid, and the state wanted us to put it back out, so we've had to solicit it a couple of times. Finally got this last round, I think we had like three contractors. So, that's kind of what we've been dealing with, and then we also have CEI services, construction engineering and inspection services, also a consultant that we had to put out the bid as well, so that's part of it.
Now, is all that complete, all that bid process, and all is done?
Yes, sir.
And now the permitting and planning stage?
Yes.
If we can get a date, or?
Yes.
Do you anticipate a target date at all?
Well, target as far as start of construction, sometime in January, hopefully in January of 2026, and completion, it's going to take a little bit over a year to complete.
Very good. You can tell us a little bit, is it going to be a concrete structure, or is it going to be a mix?
It's actually a prefab bridge, so it'd be a metal structure. I can share some plans with you guys, some stuff that we presented to council.
We would like to see renderings, if you can get them.
We don't have, unfortunately, there were no renderings that were done, so we only have plans on what it'd possibly look like, you know, just elevation and that sort of thing, but we don't have, unfortunately, there were never any renderings that were done for the bridge.
Debbie, would it be possible that the next meeting, would there be renderings available for our January meeting?
Not renderings, but I can definitely, we have plans, and it's public record, so I can get you guys a copy of the plans, and it has an elevation that'll kind of show you what it'll look like, but the consultant that designed it never, you know, was commissioned to do renderings of the bridge.
Any questions, Mr. Seifried?
Are we going to be addressing landscaping on each side of the bridge?
It'd be some minimal landscaping, but not a lot, because this is a pedestrian bridge, so it's made to move pedestrian traffic from one side to other, and it's a pedestrian safety thing, so the landscaping would be, you know, minimal.
Well, we had an interesting workshop, November of, I think, November 23, and they presented some very interesting design concepts for landscaping. Was that ever referenced?
Not, I'm not familiar with that, but I can find out, and I'll let you know, but I'm sure once, and there's going to be, I'm sure we're going to want to do some beautification around the bridge.
Oh, I would recommend that you look into that work product. It took two days for them to do their presentations, and a lot of their workup was really quite good and very pedestrian-friendly. And it's unfortunate that we have these experts come in, do all this work, and it just gets filed away, and nobody ever looks at it. So, maybe it would behoove you to look at it.
Sure, yeah, that would be a good assignment for me.
That would be for both sides.
Yes.
Because both sides are basically, right now, they're just
I agree with you.
Open walkways to either entranceway. I do recognize that you did bring out that there are some security issues with line of sight.
Correct.
For being able to see everyone entering and exit the pathway.
Definitely.
But still, I'm sure there's a workable landscaping plan that could be put in place that would take everything into mind, as far as, you know, having something that's aesthetically pleasant to look at, and also, you know, enabling secure pathways.
Duly noted.
Will this replacement bridge be any wider than the existing bridge?
Definitely, yes, it would be wider than the existing bridge.
And it will be ADA accessible?
I'm trying to remember if I saw any ramps, but I believe so, but let me double-check that, I can't.
No, I would think that they would have to.
Yes, yeah, because it's a pedestrian bridge, so definitely the width of it and that sort of thing, but I can't, you know, off the top of my head, I can't remember, you know, as far as the approach to it and everything, it has to be ADA accessible.
Well, these are things that we would want to have reported on and
Sure.
have a chance to look at.
Sure, yeah, sure.
And also bear in mind, that would be not only pedestrian traffic, but also bike traffic.
That's correct.
Using it, so there would have to be enough room for both pedestrians and bike traffic to share the right-of-ways that are going to be provided.
That's correct.
Yes, and I ride that bridge twice a day, Monday through Friday, and not having access for over a year is going to be very unfortunate, such a small bridge.
Yes, yeah. The long lead time is probably going to be the fabrication of it, once it's fabricated, the install should go pretty quickly.
Let's hope.
Any questions from staff? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, take care.
Okay, now we will move on to continued public hearings, I believe. We said that was the only thing that we wanted to.
Actually, under Communications, there was one more thing we needed to discuss. Normally, every year, you all decide whether you want to meet in January, because so many are away with family or on vacation, so our next scheduled meeting would be on January 6th, if you so choose, and if you would rather meet again in February, it would be February 3rd. Unless, of course, if we do not have any items to present, then there definitely is no meeting, but that was something to be discussed tonight.
Mr. Chair, typically, you only do that if it's the very first week of the month, and this is actually the following, on the 6th, so it doesn't typically, typically, we have, we would have a meeting.
Yes.
So, we just want to, we want to get your direction that you would like to have that meeting on the 6th.
I have no problem with it. Does anyone on the commission have a problem with that date?
No, I think the 6th is fine.
All right. I think we'll have a quorum without you, so, all right, very good, if you make note of that, since we do run into a question of a number of attendees for that night that are ultimately would not be available.
Okay.
All right. And then February 3rd, I'm fine with that, we'll just go ahead and schedule it, if anything doesn't come up, I'm sure staff will notify us, but
Absolutely.
At this point, and we can always change our mind on the January 6th meeting, should something come up, that we have problems with scheduling for the 3rd.
Well, we will have items, sir, for your January meeting.
All right, very good, thank you, Debbie.
Yes, sir.
And again, I know, for some reason, I'm still hung up on this continued public hearing. Item, I take it we have none?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Now, we will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight, and our first item on the agenda is PC 17-114. This is a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving the execution of the campus development agreement and substantially the attached form between the city of North Miami and the Florida International University Board of Trustees in accordance with Section 1013.30 Florida statutes, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. May we have staff report?
Yes, sir. Again, for the record, Debbie Love, Community Planning and Development Director. Before you is the Campus Master Plan Development Agreement for FIU Biscayne Bay Campus. FIU adopted their update to their campus master plan as required by Florida statutes, and they, it's, the update covers the period of 2015 to 2035, and so Florida statute then says, look, after you adopt this campus master plan, you need to enter into a campus development agreement with the jurisdictional body that you're in. In this, in our case, it would be with the city of North Miami. And the CDA, the purpose is multi-purpose, it is to ensure that the campus master plan is, of course, consistent with their comprehensive plan, but that it also addresses any impacts that it would have on public facilities, such as roads, water, sewer, et cetera. And it is our framework for managing the growth of Biscayne Bay campus, and it's a really great tool for cooperative work between the university and the city. And in November of 2024, FIU adopted the update, and Florida statute says they have within, they have 270 days to transmit the campus development agreement to the municipality, in our case, the city of North Miami. And on August 18th, they, of this past year, they transmitted the agreement to us, and that was the, within the timeframe that is required by Florida statute. The next step after tonight is that it would go before a public hearing before city council on 127, 26 at their meeting. One of the things that is really key for us as a city is the potential opening up the campus to 135th Street. And in this update, that is not proposed, there is actually no new student proposed, they do have some really interesting programs and expansion of different facilities they're going to be doing, but it does not affect the opening to 135th at all. With that, that is the end of my presentation. I'm not sure if the representative from FIU is in the audience, we did invite them to attend, to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, sure.
In your, in your package, you see that you have the campus master plan, that was, update that was adopted. I'm going to stop sharing my screen now. And as I said, with that, that is the end of staff's presentation on this item.
Thank you, Debbie. Yes, there is a representative here from FIU, and before he begins, I just want to reiterate that everyone received the complete campus and university update from, for both campuses. So, tonight, keep in mind that we're only interested in what you saw and what you received in the packet, had a combination of both the north campus, our Biscayne campus, and then the FIU campus, the south campus portion. So, again, only the items that are listed for the Biscayne campus will be discussed, I believe, and if the gentleman from FIU would like to come up and introduce himself, we would be happy to hear from him. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, planning commission members and staff. My name is John Cal, C-A-L, I'm the Associate Vice President for Facilities Management at Florida International University. Thank you for hearing, having our first public hearing, and for looking at the campus development agreement.
Thank you. And I understand the city of Sweetwater already has seen your proposal and the date?
Actually, the relevant jurisdiction for the Modesto Medite campus is Miami-Dade County.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
So, are we the first one up for?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. All right, go ahead, sir, if you could, please.
The city staff has prepared an excellent summary already, I don't, unless you have specific questions, or, you know, I can kind of highlight a few additional items. I do have a thumb drive that if you need additional explanation, but the relevant key factors are, first of all, we already have a campus development agreement in place, it's a 10-year agreement, it was signed February 20th, I'm sorry, February 12th, 2018. So, while it is already in place, and it's good for until 2028, the relevant statute, as Debbie Love mentioned, 1013.30, requires that whenever we do a master plan update, we also have to update the agreement. So, this agreement that you have is substantively the same as the agreement already in place. The, as Debbie mentioned, our Board of Trustees approved the plan November 21st of 2024, that triggered a 270-day period where we then had to provide you the draft CDA, that was done, as she outlined, and the subsequent date, 180 days from that point, we have to have a signed agreement in place, and that date is February 12th of 2026. So, pending any questions you may have?
The only thing that, between you and staff, Debbie, in the draft, we didn't see anything, any additions or any underlines that would call our attention to any changes in the plan, but as you stated, are there any updates that we don't see in the draft here that you would want to point out to us?
And, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
They, and I, Mr. Cal, and I spoke, they're doing some really amazing things at their campus, and so they do have some amendments and some programs and some building changes that are strictly to allow them to do more of the great work, so if Mr. Cal has an opportunity to share any additional information about some of their programs and what they're actually doing in this time period, I think that would be, I think that's what you're looking for, sir, if I may say.
Yeah, if anything was relevant to what would be changed in the master plan that the city received, that we would recommend approval for. That's mainly what I'm concerned about.
Specific to the campus development agreement, there are no substantive major changes, there are Scrivener changes, just updates, but there's no substantive change in the campus development agreement.
All right, is there anything new that you would want to share with us that perhaps is still relevant with what is planned, either cosmetically or infrastructure within the campus itself, that would be of interest?
The capital plan for the future is laid out in the master plan, and that's consistent with, again, with the previous plan. The most significant project that will be coming up shortly is a robotics, marine robotics lab being constructed under a National Institute of Science and Technology grant, so we are actually in the competitive selection process for that, and that will house a robotics lab, and it's consistent with making the Biscayne Bay campus the center of marine science and marine studies, focused, for example, on Biscayne Bay.
Okay, very good. At this point, before we open the discussion, to the commission, we'll call for public hearing to be open. Public hearing is now open, anyone wishing to address this item may step forward. Seeing none in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and also, since, did you receive any written comments from anyone?
None, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed, item is now open to the commission. Mr. Ich.
Mr. Cal, hello. I haven't seen you in a few years.
Probably since around 2018.
I think so. The last time you were here was very contentious. I hope we're not like that tonight, thank you for being here.
I have the same hope.
Well, you know the issue, it's 135th Street, and actually, I don't want to bring up dirty laundry, but it was quite offensive at that time to the city, try to sneak in it through the legislature, which you, I'm sure, had nothing to do with, but we just want to ensure that 135th Street remains closed. It's a nice neighborhood, and it would be very upsetting to the decorum of the neighborhood and to the quality of life of those people if all of a sudden we drop 1,000 cars a day on that, and here we're using 135th Street as an entrance and going through the preserve that we have now developed over there, and the same thing with the passive parkways and so forth and so on. People enjoy that street, they work, they walk, they have a good time out there. Debbie, I didn't get a chance to see any of the maps or any of the diagrams, but the last time we had a look at this, I have my old, actually, I saved it from your old master plan from 2018 when you were here. Do we have any depictions showing 135th Street open going through the campus? That's what caught our attention the last time, and I just want to make sure, yeah, it's east of Biscayne Boulevard to the campus, we show any?
Right. No, and that's a critical piece of that, let me reshare my PowerPoint real quick, so I can get you pointed back to that. Okay, on the screen, you should see the Biscayne Bay illustrative plan, and as you can see, there's nothing going through here, and you could also look in the master plan itself, which is in your package, there is nothing going through to 135th at all. They do have some other plans, and one, as I said, as Mr. Cal said, was the robotics, very exciting work they're doing out there, but nothing related to 135th Street, sir.
Okay, thank you, Debbie, appreciate that. Mr. Cal, it's good to see you, I'm glad we don't have to go to Lagerhead's tonight over that, I'm sure you're very happy, and I wish you all the best, and the campus all the best, you're doing a great job out there. One question that I have is, any new development that goes out there, does that impact our supply of water, and the sewer goes from you right to the county sewer system out there, how does that work, Mr. Cal?
Yes, we have control of the sewer system, and I think years ago, we purchased that from the city, and so we're responsible for that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, good luck, thank you.
Mr. McDermade?
Mr. Cal, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
You all do amazing work out there, and I have no issues with this, as long as Debbie assures us that 135th Street is protected. I mean, it's exciting about the aquatic robotics lab, that's going to be an exciting feature, so look forward to seeing what comes from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermade. Dr. Besen, good evening, sir.
The, has there been any plans to change the roadways for greater access through the 151st Street area, the main campus entrance point?
We don't control those roadways, so we can't.
How do you get into the campus itself?
Into the campus itself? No, because the entrance to the, once you're on that road, it's easy to get into the campus.
No, 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 I'm familiar with the campus. Just once you get into the campus, are you planning any development, I didn't see any development for additional parking as the university grows?
The growth right now is essentially capped, so we have sufficient parking, there's no need for additional parking. The massed school is, does intend to expand, and so they will take care of their own parking, and there will be a slight modification to an access road there, but beyond that, we have no plans for specific road changes within the campus.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Besen. Dominique?
Nice to meet you, my first time
Equally.
meeting you all. As someone that graduated from FIU twice and is very familiar with the BBC campus, it's nice to see that there are some new changes coming about, so, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dominique. Chair recognizes Mr. Seifried.
Is there any interaction between FIU and the University of Miami Rosenstiel School of Marine Sciences?
That's actually beyond my purview, beyond my scope as the facilities management AVP. There is, there are a lot of associations and the professors that I know interact, but that's really beyond my purview to address. I would not be an authoritative source of information on that.
All right, thank you. I have no questions and no objections to the plan.
At this time, the chair will call for a motion to approve
So moved.
Proposals, motion's been made to approve the item. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Seifried. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Ich? Mr. Ich is yes. Mr. McDermade?
Yes.
Mr. McDermade is a yes. Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Pierre is a yes. Mr. Seifried?
Yes.
Mr. Seifried is a yes. Mr. Besen?
Yes.
Mr. Besen is a yes. Chairman Ernst is a yes. Chairman Ernst is a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, and thank you to the work of the city staff, and please enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a quasi judicial item, and I'm going to call upon the... All of a sudden, the room is emptied. Okay. I'm going to call upon the commission council to read in the record the quasi judicial proceedings for us, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a summary of quasi judicial procedures applicable to this item. These rules apply to applications on specific parcels of land, like zoning map amendments, special exceptions, variances, and conditional use requests. The commission will sit like a court, hence the term quasi judicial, reviewing the facts presented at the hearing, applying the adopted rules as explained by staff in the staff report and verbally. Commission members can make site visits but must disclose the evidence upon which they intend to rely from that visit. Commission members will disclose at the beginning of the hearing whether they've had communications with individuals on behalf of the applicant or otherwise, including who the communication was with and what the topic of discussion was. All persons intending to speak to the commission will be sworn by the clerk. The staff will make a presentation, and the commission may ask questions. The applicant will make a presentation, including expert witnesses, if any, and the commission may ask questions. When the public hearing is open, the public can make comments on the application, limited to two minutes each. Citizen testimony must be fact-based, not opinion. Commission may ask questions, and the applicant's attorney, if any, may ask questions on cross-examination. Members of the public can decline to be cross-examined. Staff may present additional testimony to supplement or rebut arguments made. Commission deliberates based on the evidence presented. Commission's decision must be based on competent substantial evidence, meaning based on the record, staff presentations, expert presentations, and fact-based comments by citizens according to the standards for approval set forth in the city code. Commission may approve, deny, or continue the item. While staff previously read into the record email-to-mail comments, since these are not competent substantial evidence, for example, not sworn testimony subject to cross-examination, the board's decision cannot be based on what is contained in the emails or mailed comments, but that can be used to identify issues and help identify sources of information that do contain competent substantial evidence upon which a decision can be based. Written comments submitted before the meeting are part of the record and available for review by the commission. Lastly, we ask each of you to treat this proceeding with respect and proper decorum, no calling out, interrupting speakers, or disrupting the proceeding. Please give this proceeding the same dignity and respect as if you were in court. Disruptions are prohibited and enforceable pursuant to the city code. Please also silence your cell phones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. H. Madam Secretary, at this time, could you please swear in all those that will be giving testimony?
Okay, anyone who's going to be speaking this evening on this item, I need you to please stand at the moment to take the oath. Only one person? Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
Love needed to be sworn in if she's giving a staff report. Ms. Love as well.
Oh, Ms. Love, did you hear that?
I did. Unfortunately, I got cut off, so I'm on my phone. So yes, I am raising my hand.
Okay. You swear to that everything you say is going to be the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Wonderful, thank you.
And welcome back.
Thank you. I cannot believe it, my laptop battery actually died. My apologies.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so this is PC 17-115.
Do we want to disclose if we've had comments?
There is no...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's no disclosure mentioned here on this item.
Well, you should still do disclosures if there are any.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask if there's anyone that needs to disclose any conversation or any talk with the petitioners or anyone else in the community regarding this item. It's open if anyone wants.
Yeah, I've had communications for and against the project.
All right.
As well as a telephone conference with a representative of the petitioner.
All right. Right. Anyone else on the commission? Right. So noted, Mr. McDermott, thank you very much. And Mr. McDermott, it's fine to counsel. We're okay to proceed?
Yes, of course.
With this disclosure? Very good, thank you, sir. All right, once again, this will be PC 17-111, I'm sorry, PC 17-115. This is a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving an application for a conditional use permit and substantially attached form for the conversion of 15 dormitory units to residential dwelling units for a proposed redevelopment consisting of two apartment buildings that are comprised of one seven-story unit, two-story buildings, and one eight-unit, one-story building, and 57 parking spaces of five parcels of real property located at 1640 Northeast 127th Street, 1605, 1625, and 1645 Northeast 126th Street, and a portion of a parking lot located directly north of 1645 Northeast 126th Street, and specifically identified with Miami-Dade folio numbers as follows. 0.98 acres in accordance with Article 3, Division 4, Sections 3-402 through 3-407, Article 4, Division 2, Sections 4-205, and Article 4, Division 3, Sections 4, 0304, and 4-310 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and all other purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Of course. Once again, for the record, Debbie Love, community planning and development. Please share the screen. Once again, this is a conditional use permit for Arch Creek Apartments. These apartments were actually former part of JWU. They had, many, 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 many moons ago, they had converted to dormitories. And as after JWU sold off the properties, many of these parcels have been purchased by different owners. And in this case, this is a 15-unit project, and what you see is, it is in a, it's located at 1640 Northeast 127th, 1605, 1625, and 1645 Northeast 126th, and then a portion of a parking lot just directly north of 1645 Northeast 126th. And you can see that's right up here. The total size of the subject property is a little less than an acre. They are currently, well, they were used as dormitories, and this is to legalize them into, back into apartments. And we needed to do that through a conditional use permit to reassign the density back to the parcels. It is zoned PU, that area, and community facility university on the future land map. And it's also within the North Miami Transit Station Overlay District. In addition to being able to do 250 feet in height and 150 dwelling units per acre through a CUP, it does require a minimum of 500 square feet per unit. So the proposal is to, as I said, to convert the 15 dormitory units to apartment units, and they have added more than enough parking, it's 57 surface parking spaces. There are actually three buildings on the subject property. One is a seven-unit apartment building, and then there are two four-unit apartment buildings for a total of 15 units. The existing structure sizes range from 200 to 600 square feet. And on November 20th of last year, the Board of Adjustment granted a variance to the 500 square foot minimum unit size to allow this project to move forward. The economic impact is the existing ad liborum taxes. They're existing buildings, they're not redeveloping them. If somewhere down the road they do that, then, you know, of course, that'll be a different story as to ad liborum, impact, permit fees, et cetera. But in this case, all this is legalizing them to be permanent residential dwelling Very huge CUP conditions. They need to get a certificate of use in BTR, and they have to unify the properties prior to the building permit, if any, or prior to certificate of occupancy. And as I said, if the property redevelops in the future, they'll have to do a number of things that you all have seen typically before, everything from sustainability commitments to installing six-foot wide sidewalks. But in this case, none of that is applicable for right now. It is just legalizing the existing 15 dormitory units, converting them to residential apartments. That is actually the end of my presentation. I do know the applicant is here and/or their representative, and they may have a brief presentation, and they are certainly here to answer any questions in addition to me that you may have.
Debbie, just a quick question. We had a similar item, if this is not correct, before us at one point. Was this the same project that we?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yeah, that was actually called Palm Gardens Apartments, but it's the same, it was the same thing. You legalize the dormitory units back into residential dwelling units.
Correct, and that did pass?
Yes, sir. For a different project, of course, but yes, it did.
Yes. But the same concept.
Yes, it is. Staff definitely recommends approval. It's pretty straightforward. Not a whole lot of redevelopments going to happen for right now, and this will become, you know, housing for residents in the city.
All right. Thank you very much for answering that question, and if we could have the petitioner come before us. Good evening. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name's Alessandra San Romano with law offices located 701 Brickell Avenue. With me this evening is my colleague, Mishka Alstitut, as well as representatives from the Arch Creek Apartment LLC. We're here on behalf of the applicant. Ms. Love did a fantastic presentation, so I will try to keep this very brief. But as Ms. Love mentioned, before you, tonight is a conditional use permit request to allow for the continuation of the multifamily development as it's existed in the city for over half a century, really to continue providing affordable housing in the city. So just to orient you a bit, the property consists of a little bit less than an acre parcel of land located just between Northeast 16th Avenue and between Northeast 17th Avenue, and then between Northeast 126th Street and Northeast 127th Street in the city. The site may seem familiar to you all, as it was part of the former Johnson and Wales University campus, but even long before that, these buildings were still there, and they were used as an affordable multifamily development. Here are the buildings in 1957, the first of two buildings on the site opened its doors to residents, and then shortly after, the southernmost building was erected in 1961. Now, today, the property has a land use designation of community facility university and is zoned public use, but it is part of the North Miami Transit Station Overlay District, which allows multifamily residential uses, but only through a conditional permit. With the code changes that created the North Miami Transit Station Overlay District and the rezoning of the site due to the Johnson and Wales purchase, the current use is being brought back up to the city's code requirements. As it stands today, the permitted use or the existing use is not permitted under the code, and so that's why we're before you obtaining a conditional use permit. As part of our efforts to make the existing site consistent with the code, last year, we requested and received approval from the Board of Adjustments for a variance to legalize the unit sizes, which they are not, not all are within that 500 square foot minimum requirement. Today, we're requesting that last final approval, the conditional use permit, as Ms. Love noted, really to allow this use to continue and be consistent with the city's code today. So I'll keep the next few slides very brief, but, you know, you may be asking yourself, what makes these units so special? These units are part of a very unique type of affordable housing that's called NOA, naturally occurring affordable housing. It's unsubsidized, privately owned residential properties that are typically lower in cost than those charged at micro units due to their age, their condition, and their size. But they're very desirable for tenants because of the price truly and the location in neighborhoods that are really located near places of worship, transportation, and really because the rent is affordable. For reference, here, the average Arch Creek rent is about $1,510, whereas the average rent in Miami-Dade County is about $2,500. Here's a sketch of the site. Here are a few photographs of the existing residential buildings. And just for reference, the property is also within walking distance to a nearby school and neighborhood retail. Now, on the screen is the conditional use permit criteria. The applicant meets each and every one of the criteria listed. To summarize, these are really existing buildings that were built well over half a century, and we want to be able to legalize them back into multifamily use. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, we, Ms. Love noted that we are not redeveloping the site. I think there was a condition in the original approval that we would need DRC approval, since we're not seeking to redevelop. We will do that, if even necessary, at a future time, and we would work with staff. That concludes my presentation. Again, we urge you to recommend for approval this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we turn questions over to everyone here on the panel, let me open the public hearing real quick. Public hearing is now open. Seeing no one that has arrived after everyone was sworn in to give testimony, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, we had something like this before, I believe, and so there might be some questions, and we'll begin with Mr. H.
Couple of questions, actually. Did we, we did vacate the right of way on the alleyway in the back. Did you get that?
We have not done that just yet. We need city council approval to find a line.
That's still in the works?
That is still in the works. It was deferred indefinitely until we can figure out all of the moving.
So once this is done, you're going to go back for that? Is that the plan?
That's correct.
And then eventually, I hope, that we're going to redevelop this property?
Eventually. Not, not, not on, not something we have discussed just yet, but it's something that would be in the works once we're ready to do so.
I mean, like you said, they're 70 years old, they're 200 square feet. I know these were dorms. I have a question for Debbie, if I may. Debbie, there?
I am, sir.
Okay, I see that way we're going to send it to the Development Review Committee. What would we send to them? I mean, this is, the building is just going over. I mean, what would they recommend? What would we do? Are we going to be improving it, or we're just, we're just status quo? I understand we want to get out of the tax roll, and, but why would?
No, this is, this is actually just a condition. No, this is, this is actually just a condition of a CUP, so that they don't have to come back and modify the CUP.
Right.
If they decide to redevelop in the future.
Okay.
They would just have to do, if they were going to do aspiral units or something like that, then they would have to go to DRC. So those are just our standard comments. We don't anticipate this to go at this, in this configuration. This will not be going to DRC in this current configuration.
I mean, do you guys plan to do anything, or just it's going the way it is? I understand, I, yeah.
For now, we are not redeveloping. In the future, should we do so, we obviously would work with staff.
Debbie, you answered this before, and kind of interesting. I see where we're going to take apartments out of the pool, and I think, what were we looking at here? A total of 20 apartments, something?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen apartments, okay. My question is this to you, Deb. And you did answer it, but forgive me, as I get older, I get more forgetful. The 15, they were originally apartments, I remember them.
Correct.
And then they became dorms.
Correct.
And now we have to take it out of the pool to put them back to apartments now. And the reason that we do that is because of our services, sewer and so forth and so on, the sewer, the water, the supply. That was the whole criteria, correct?
No.
No?
What happened is that when, when we changed the zoning.
Okay.
From back in the day.
Okay.
To PU, all the density was removed from the property. So in order to have apartments there, you have to put the density back. And then the only way you can put the density back is through a conditional use permit to take the, allocate the 15 units out of our floating unit pool to reallocate density back to that site.
Okay. And the reason for that is usage of the water and sewer, correct? I'm not?
That is absolutely correct, sir, yes.
Okay, now, this is, you know, I knew Johnson and Wales, I mean, very well, and I can assure you, I bet if we compared today's bill to with Johnson and Wales and the supply that they were using, they're using a hell of a lot less than Johnson and Wales was using. They had four and five people in those dorms. And, you know, and it just, I was thinking about this today when I was, and yesterday when I was going through this, and I'm saying, you did answer this to me a while back, and I'm saying, why in the heck are we taking these apartments out of the pool? Because the whole predicate for that was, we're using more water, more services, more sewer. But you guys are probably using a heck of a lot less than they were when they had four kids to each apartment over there.
That's correct.
And I just.
But there's no residential density left. That was all removed. It has nothing, at this point, whether they use 10 times more or 10 times less, it's because of the residential component.
I got you on that. And it's a matter of semantics, I guess, because what we're saying is when they had the kids there, when the students were there, it was a hell of a lot more crowded than it is today.
Right.
It just doesn't, it doesn't add up. I, you know, I mean, I have no problem with the project, you know what Mario was trying to do, and, you know, go for it. I was just wondering, to get my own thoughts together on this. And thank you, good luck with it. Thank you, I appreciate your time. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. H.
You're welcome, sir.
If I, if I could follow up on one of his points that he brought up. You mentioned in your presentation that it would comply with multifamily use. Explain that terminology, because certainly the size would restrict the amount of people that you could have in the apartment complex. So how do, how do you define multifamily use?
It's simply the apartment style, because right now it's considered a dormitory in the code, so we would be going back to multifamily. We wouldn't be changing anything in the building. They would be studio or one-bedroom type units, but the units themselves would not change. It's just the categorization of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. McDermott, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I like the project mainly from the standpoint that is bringing affordable housing to the area. And I don't think, you'd have to be in Alaska in a hut somewhere not to understand the affordability crisis that we have in Miami-Dade in particular. The fact that we're adding affordable housing, particularly on this side of town. As you know, a lot of the units that are going up, two bedrooms are like $3,100 and 35, I mean, it's just crazy stuff. So I'm really glad to see that affordable housing is, you know, going to be part of this area, because certainly the people who live here certainly need it. Thanks.
Dominique, you have, Chair recognizes Mr. Pierre.
Just like Mr. McDermott said, having affordable housing down here sounds like a great plan, and you guys aren't making any major changes, so fully support.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Seifert, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad to see that we're finally bringing these apartments under the code umbrella where they should have been brought some years ago. So we're finally legalizing their status. The affordable housing element is crucial. It's not adding, it's simply sustaining these units in that affordable housing market, and that's a plus. I have no objections to this proposal. I hope to see it passed tonight, and wish you every success, and hope it moves on and continues to contribute to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Besson.
A couple of questions. You mentioned that these were affordable houses. How many square feet is the smallest unit?
About 234 square feet.
And what is the charge for that unit?
If you give me one second, it's about like 1,300 or 1,100.
1,100. So that works out to about, somewhere about $6 a square foot, give or take. Now, if you have a 5,000, a 500-square-foot unit, which typically is the size of a two-bedroom, that would work out to be probably $3,000. Okay? So what's affordable about this housing? Because it's, you're getting a very small footprint of a home. Basically, at the same price as you would a more updated unit built in North Miami. Explain to me why it's, you know, why is this affordable? Because you get less for your money.
So.
It's still right up there at the same cost per square foot.
If I'm not mistaken, the, let me just confirm, but the, for example, the 500-square-foot apartments are far less than the 3,000, but if you will give me a second, I can confirm with our client.
Okay. That's for the bar.
So, for example, the 500 is about 1,600. The reason why some of the smaller units are on the higher end, if you will, is demand. There has been a significant amount of demand for actually the smaller units. The larger units are priced at a maximum of $1,600.
How is the, Debbie? Are you there?
Ms. Love.
Ms. Love?
Yes, sir. Yes, I am.
Have a question. What's the total property taxes that the city collects on this type of property?
I couldn't answer that question, sir.
Okay.
They're paying approximately $45,000.
$45,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if the property was to be developed into something else, multi-story, new, fresh, would that bring in more dollars for the city? Ms. Love?
That would definitely change the ad liborum assessment. I can't, I'm not the property appraiser or the tax collector, but that typically new development brings in additional ad liborum, because it does raise the property value.
Okay. Do you have any pictures of the insides of these units? I know they're occupied, but there must be some sort of, when one was empty?
Not with me this evening, unfortunately. I do have the floor plan, but not any images inside.
Okay. Have they been updated at all recently?
They've been just painted, and any.
What about the, what about the stoves or refrigerators? Are they from?
Yes.
The '60s, '70s, '80s?
No, 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 no. Anything that has been broken has been fixed or replaced, paint as well, but no walls have been changed.
Okay. They have a single bathroom for each unit?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds like San Francisco. Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrying forward in the same line of questioning, they're basically studios. How many of those 200-square-feet units are we talking about?
It's a small amount, like, one, actually, one.
One?
Yeah, one.
But that would be typical amenities for a studio. In other words, they would have a bathroom.
That's correct.
They have cooking facilities.
Yes.
The difference would be that they sleep and live in the same area.
That's correct.
I can't, the prints are real small. I think I'm looking at one now, and it looks like the kitchen area is, oh, no, that's the two-bedroom, I'm sorry. Or a single bedroom. I had seen one, but the layout just consists of a living area, kitchen area, and bathroom area for that studio?
For a studio, yes.
Okay. And then the only change with the, you would, had to have gutted out portions of some of the dorm, previous dorm setup to allow for initial bedrooms if you were going with a 2-1 or something like that? Because every dorm was the same size, correct?
Sure, yes. The unit sizes never changed. Perhaps, like we mentioned, stove or anything like that that changed. The walls themselves, the buildings, the structures did not change.
Nothing inside, okay.
Yeah, the inside stayed the same.
So then what, so, again, they're one-bedroom each?
No, there's a mixture. You've got a studio, one bedroom, and two.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just a little confused with the two-bedroom as to how it could, how you can fit a two-bedroom in what you had as a dorm space. The dorm space was, if you're not changing that or restructuring a particular area to allow for additional space. So what?
Yeah, sure. He would need to be sworn in. Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, sure. Good evening. We'll need your name and address, sir.
Sure. Mario Borda, 224 Atlantic Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. So I'm the, how are you? So I'm the owner of the property. I mean, the buildings were always multifamily, so when we purchased it from Johnson and Wales, they had a kitchen. So for example, the one-bedroom, you would, you go in, you have a kitchen.
Right.
You have like a dining area, and then you have the bedroom on one side. The way that Johnson and Wales had it, they had two, basically bunk beds in one bedroom and two bunk beds in the living room. So the only thing that we really did was painted a different color, and that's it. So they've always been, the studio was, I guess, just for a single person. Then you have the one-bedrooms, which has a living room, kitchen, nice kitchen with a lot of glass, bedroom, and a bathroom. And then the two-bedrooms are two bedrooms and one bathroom with a living room and a kitchen.
So where would the second, where's the number two-bedroom? Is that?
So you basically.
Are you combining?
No, it's existing. So the same thing as, for example, the buildings that are unemeralded or the buildings that are located south of 125th, they were all buildings that, the only thing that Johnson and Wales did was they put bunk beds in the living rooms.
Right.
But they didn't change anything.
Okay.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't change the configuration, Charlie. What they did is they improved the bathrooms, they improved the kitchen, and they generally upgraded the apartments, but what they did was they had bunk beds. I live next to that, so I.
Oh, right.
And, you know, they, they had bunk beds in there, and they stuffed the kids in there, thought you were in the subway.
All right, right.
It was like four kids to an apartment.
So for example, the two-bedrooms had six bunk beds.
Oh, okay.
The one-bedrooms had four.
Right.
The studio had two.
Yeah, I mean, it was amazing, yeah.
Okay. And then I'm sure you had to bring everything up to state code.
No, we basically.
Because when these were built, the back.
We kept the alarm system, it just made sense.
Oh, really?
It's like this sophisticated alarm system.
So obviously, Johnson and Wales must have upgraded everything to state standard.
So they upgraded that, and then you were asking in terms of the rent, right?
Yeah.
But between what we pay in real estate taxes, we pay the water bill, and just upkeeping, I mean, we maybe make $100, $150 per unit.
Right. All right, that's, that's all. Thank you for clarifying that. That's merely a clarification on the, I was just trying to visualize what a one-bedroom looked like and a two-bedroom.
Yeah, you were visualizing like how a dorm was. Need to be on the record.
Yes.
You were trying, I guess you were trying to visualize how they converted the apartments to dorms, but they really didn't do anything. It wasn't like the other building that they had where they actually did dorms, no, it was just an apartment building.
There are floor plans in the agenda package.
Yeah, I was looking at, but they were just kind of hard to, the print's very small for us to see there, and I just wanted to get a better understanding. Thank you so much for that clarification. I have no other questions. Any other comments, questions from anyone?
Mr. Chairman? I just want to bring up one thing, if I might, you're going to make a motion?
Yeah.
I just want to bring up one thing, if I may. I don't want to belabor this subject, nothing to do with Mario's project here, but what I see happening now in North Miami, where before I didn't see for rent signs, I'm seeing them up all over the place. And as we develop new buildings, they're going to see the rents come down. And with Mon, I don't know what's going to happen now with Monbami in New York, if we're going to have a flood of people leaving New York City because of rent control, so forth and so on. But what's happening right now is we're having new buildings going up, and I eventually to say that this project will probably change in a couple of years also, but what I do see is where I've never seen for rent signs before, and I do a lot of walking in this city, I do see the price coming down. And I think when Mario bought that property, the rent was up here, and now it's coming down, if I'm not mistaken, and there is more affordable housing coming up, so, anyway, that was my two cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McDermott?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item.
Second.
And I'll pull up the number right now. Hold on one second. Yeah, hold on. And PC 17-115, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'm going to motion to approve the item.
I'll second.
I have a second from, no, Mr. McDermott made the motion.
Right, and then I thought she reached seconded, that's what.
Not yet, I haven't heard officially. Now, Mr., yes. Mr. H is just seconded the motion. We'll do a roll call on this again.
Chairman Aaron?
Yes.
Vice Chair McDermott?
Yes.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pierre?
Yes.
And Commissioner Besson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Before we ask for a adjournment, staff, is there any committee reports we need to get tonight here?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Any old business?
Nope, but at our next meeting, we're going to give you an update about the LDRs in January, at your January meeting.
Oh, great.
Okay, great. And then, new business? If, Debbie, if we could get a report back from the Public Works Commission scheduled at one of those meetings, that would be great, on the bridge.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Fit. Mr. Fidler actually just sent the plans that he was referencing, and Cynthia will email those to everyone tomorrow.
Okay, great. Is that all right?
Did you still, did you still want him to attend your January meeting, or would the plans be sufficient?
Let's decide that after we see the plans.
Yes. Now, we'll, if we could get back to you on that, and not make a commitment tonight, we'll look at the plans, and then if we need to, would it be fine that we could get in touch with you before the January meeting, if necessary?
Yes, just as soon as you can, let Cynthia know.
All right.
And then she'll make arrangements with, with Mr. Fidler, for either him or a member of his team to attend your meeting, if that's what your desire is.
Thank you very much. Okay, hearing no other items, I call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second it.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you so much.